Yes, sir.
Okay. Ready?
Yes, sir.
All the meeting in order, if you would, to win me the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, last week, the war in a distant land came home to Orange County when one of our own, Master Sergeant George Banner Jr., was killed in the line of duty. Although we have been aware that many of our best young men and women are dying in these wars, when such a tragedy affects us so directly, we become more intimately aware of the pain of these many deaths. We ask you, Lord, to bless and comfort the friends and family of George Banner Jr. and the friends and families of all the others who have been lost serving our nation. Amen.
Okay. Before we begin, we have several changes to the original agenda. Item four D has been struck. Item seven D has been added. Item eight A and B both have been added. Item nine C has been added, and the closed meeting has been deleted. Are there any other changes to the agenda before we begin? Hearing another...
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero one, absent. The consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero one, absent. Okay, we move to public appearances, and first, we would have the presentation of the 2013 VACO Achievement Awards to Fire and EMS and Animal Shelter. Phyllis Arico, General Counsel, Virginia Association of Counties.
Mr. Chairman, she is scheduled to be here today at five, but she has not yet arrived.
Okay. Well, in that case, we'll wait for her and do that in a little bit. We'll move then to the business spotlight. Don Berry, the owner of Scoops.
I'm Phil Berry.
Okay, I was gonna say.
I'm speaking on her behalf.
If you would, stand at the podium, that way you can speak to the microphone and people can hear you when they watch you on TV.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, my name is Phil Berry. I am the husband of Don Berry. It's a family-owned business, Scoops. We're located at the Orange Field Shopping Center. We've been open since 4th of July of last year, so we're, it's our first crack at running a business. We're learning as we're going, but we're starting to get the hang of it. It's starting to get a little easier. We're starting to get a routine. It's a family-owned business. We're family-oriented and like to stay active in the community. We've been involved in events, local events in the city. Recently, we were involved with the fair that just happened, and then prior to that, they had a, it was a Blues, like a Blues and Ritz Festival. We were there for that. That was very good. Hope to do that again next year. That turned out really well. Tell you a little something about our store. We sell primarily ice cream, anything to do with ice cream. We do shakes, we do cupped ice cream, coned ice cream. We make special teeth cones. We do banana splits. We also do sandwiches, homemade soups, all varieties. Generally, the soup's better in the wintertime than they do in the summer, and we make our own salads, and we also do breakfast as well. We open from nine in the morning till nine in the evening on weekdays. On weekends, we stay open until ten. It's good to stay open a little bit later, it seems, in the evenings in Orange. Not as many restaurant-type businesses stay open as late, so it's good we get that later crowd, especially in the summertime. Well, let's see here. Oh, some of the things that we offer in our store, we offer free Wi-Fi, and we have cable TV, and on the weekends, when football's playing, you can come in if you want to watch football. We generally have, you know, some kind of sports or something going on, depending on whatever the customers want to see. If they want to see something, we'll put it on for them, as long as it's, you know, G-rated. Also, one thing that we have in our store that a lot of other places don't have is, we have lots of little just board games. When customers come in, if they want to sit down and play a game, sit down and play, we're not, you won't want to rush them in and out or anything. Just sit down and have a good time, relax, and, you know, enjoy your ice cream, enjoy a game, and, you know, when you're ready to leave, you know, then leave at your leisure. No problem. Also, is being active in the community. Scoops, we donate to the police department. They generally just give certificates, and also, on the, I believe it's the first Monday of every month?
First Monday.
First Monday of every month, my wife, she donates proceeds, like 10% of our proceeds to the schools. So, it's just a little something to give back, to let us know that we appreciate the patronage coming in. We also do catering for any kind of, anything, birthday parties, whatever you wanted to do. We do catering for ice cream or sandwiches, or, you know, whatever they want. And that's pretty much, oh, I know it's probably not three minutes, but that's it in a nutshell right there.
Do you make your own ice cream, or?
No, actually, we have about 30 flavors. We try to keep around 30 flavors. It's Hershey's Ice Cream, very good ice cream, it's very popular, and Hershey's has been very supportive of us, starting up. They helped us out with, you know, they donated, they don't really donate to let you use their coolers, so if we have problems, we call them, they'll come in, they'll fix them up. They also have a mobile cart that we can drive up to Winchester, and when we have events outside, if we want to, if we want to, you know, go out to an event like the fair or something, they'll let us use their cart. That's free of charge, as long as we bring it back clean, no problem. So. Yeah, we're here, we're here, and we're available, so. Okay?
Sounds good.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And good luck.
I have a question. You mentioned you're open until ten on Saturday night. Do you do any, like, coffees and desserts? Because a lot of people...
Well, we do. We have all kinds of coffees.
...like to come in for dessert or those kind of things after having been out or dinner or whatever, so you do, okay.
Well, sometimes people, when they eat at the restaurants, like, there's an Italian restaurant right next to us, they'll might come in afterwards and, like, have a coffee or, we don't, we used to do a lot of pies and cakes, but it seemed like not as many people ate the cakes and the pies, so we didn't, you know, we had to cut that out of the menu. But my wife keeps a fairly large selection of gourmet coffee. She's into those little individual packets that you slip in, and that way you can get a good variety.
Good.
Right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's here.
Okay. Well, in that case, we'll go back to the presentation of the 2013 VACO Achievement Awards with Phyllis Arico, General Counsel, Virginia Association of Counties.
Thank you so much.
I am so sorry to be tardy. I got lost, and then I was on the wrong side of the train tracks at the wrong time.
Caught that 455 train.
Yes, exactly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, and guests. I am very pleased to be here tonight on behalf of the Virginia Association of Counties to present not one, but two VACO Achievement Awards to Orange County for their spectacular programs. And I want to talk a little bit about our awards program. It is a competitive program. It is not, it's not the type of program that everybody that enters gets an award. It is competitive. We have 12 categories. We had about 40 entries this year, and we have three people every year that have a lot of county government experience as the judges, the panel of judges, and this year, the panel consisted of Ted Povar, who is Associate Director of the Virginia Institute of Government, and he's been there for many, many years; George Drumright, who is retired from Henrico County, he was a deputy county manager there for many years; and also Wendy Wingo, who is a retired supervisor from Bodotoc County. All three who have a lot of experience in different aspects of county government, looking at all of these submittals. And, let me move this down because I'm short. They were looking at really four criteria with each of the submittals. One, does the program offer an innovative solution to a problem, situation, or the delivery of services? Two, does the program promote intergovernmental or private enterprise cooperation in addressing a problem or a solution? Three, does the program provide a model that other local governments may learn from or implement in their own localities? And four, does the program represent an innovative approach or customization by the local government? And this is the first time, I think, that Orange County has entered the VACO awards, and to win two out of the 12 awards is really quite outstanding. Not only did Orange County win two, but they also won the best overall as well for one of these programs. So it's just really spectacular and says a lot about the staff that you have in this fine county. I want to talk a little bit about each one of the programs before I present a plaque. The first is the Orange County Coffee Wood K-9 Training Program, and this won the award for regional collaboration. We get many, many submittals in this category with governments having to do more with less, trying to get together and do some kind of a cooperative program, and this is really one of the most outstanding entries we ever had. And I know that this really is due to the efforts of three special people who I'd like to recognize in a moment. But this program, a little bit about it, is the Orange County Animal Shelter partnered with Coffee Wood Correctional Facility to create the Coffee Wood K-9's training program, I think in 2009 was the first year. And as the training program approaches its fourth anniversary, over 200 dogs have been rehabilitated and adopted through this initiative. And really, the success has been achieved in large part because of the participating inmates who have demonstrated great skill and compassion in their work with the dogs of all breeds, needs, and ability. And I really think this program is unique in that you really, it really had a great impact on the prisoners who were training the dogs on your animal shelter staff, and also brought great attention to the needs and adoption of these animals, which I think is really a wonderful, wonderful thing. And I would love to present this award. I think we have Warden Samuel Pruitt from the Coffee Wood Correctional Center, Billy Lacy, a counselor at the Correctional Center, and Elizabeth Hamilton from the Animal Shelter here tonight, so. They could come up. I would love to present this award. It's a very nice award, and I know they'll display it proudly, and I want to thank you very much for this program and this submittal. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time, we really appreciate it.
Get you all together, get that nice picture.
Well, nicer picture if I stepped out of it.
I don't think so. Thank you.
Ms. Avs couldn't be here.
It's yours.
No, it's always...
Well, sir. Thank you so much. And I think this program is really inspirational, and this is, it meets all the criteria that I talked about, and clearly one that I think other localities would really like to duplicate because it has so many benefits to it. So, just a perfect example of an award-winning program. This second award is Orange County's Project MITI, and it, I think I found what that stands for, but Multimedia Interactive Training Initiative. Am I getting that right, guys? Yes? This won the best award of all of the entries. It was really outstanding, and Ted Povar, who's been acting as a judge for us for many, many years, said that this was the single best program that he's ever, ever reviewed in all his years of doing this. So I really think that just speaks volumes. And I think the timeliness of this kind of an award, I mean, of this kind of a program is just incredible with all the new training standards and all the demands on public safety and the lack of funding to meet these demands. This program is exactly the type of thing that we like to recognize at VACO. Now, this project, MITI, I understand was conceptualized after County of Orange Fire and EMS made good on a promise of creating a video discussing Rappahannock EMS Council's new guidelines in June of 2012. And I understand that the project was under the direction of Chief Harkness and was really worked on by Assistant Chief Tom Joyce, who has years of public service in the emergency medical field, teaming up with firefighter EMT Tim Bullock, who I understand is the producer-director of these quality productions. And as I mentioned earlier, with any rural emergency services operation, it's really, really challenging to provide good training and to get that training out there and to reach your personnel and your volunteers when you're covering so much ground with so little. And this multimedia project using social networking and media distribution is the perfect tool to meet this challenge. And what I really loved about this program is not only the training aspect of it, but reaching out to the citizens as well, so that they can have some instruction about maybe what they should do when they're facing an emergency, and about the type of training that their EMS and firefighters go through. And it was just a superb program, and one that I understand is already being utilized with other jurisdictions and other agencies, and I hope they might do some of the same thing. And I just think it's just so timely to have this type of an award, so I would love to present this. Do we have someone, the chief, assistant chief, to come up and get it? Mr. Bullock? Excellent, you could all be here.
I'm gonna step back from this because this is truly the work of Chief Joyce and firefighter Bullock, so they're the ones, are the reason that we received this award, so I don't let these guys do it because they're the brains behind this all.
He's the genius, I'm just the talking head.
You're the star of all the productions, though, right? I know, because I've watched.
It's a Tim star. There we go. There we go.
Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thank you all so much.
It's Project Mighty. We're a small county, but we're mighty.
We are mighty, I love that. That's great, that's great. Well, I would like to thank you for allowing me to come out and present this right here in the home jurisdiction because I think that it's really important. We often hear about maybe the things we don't do so well, and it's great to hear about the things that we do do well, and to celebrate them among colleagues and peers throughout the Commonwealth. And we will also recognize these programs at our annual conference in November in Bath County, but really wanted to be here tonight to present to all of you, and thank you for the just superb job that you do here in Orange County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you tell us a little bit about, you said it was an overall county, we were the best overall county?
Yes.
And how did that get decided?
Well, it's interesting. We've only had, this program has been in place for 11 years, and sometimes we just give an award in each category, and on four occasions, this is the fourth, there was some program that was just so outstanding that the judges decided to give it a best overall. It doesn't happen every year, but just that it met and exceeded all the components of the program and was something that was really a valuable tool, not only here in Orange County, but all throughout the Commonwealth, and that's really how it happened. So it doesn't happen every year, and it's very special, and for Orange County to get two awards and the best overall is just spectacular.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I even have a cameo in the world.
You have a cameo, really? I'm gonna watch it. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming. Okay. Next would be the Office on Youth Quarterly Report. Alicia Bynes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for letting me come and give you an update on what we've been doing in the Office on Youth over the past several months. I believe you have received a snapshot of some of our programs, and I just want to touch on a few. Our Strengthening Families and our Innovators for Success programs will be beginning September 23rd. Our Strengthening Families program, which is the newer grant for the older children, or the older youth, excuse me, will actually start doing a rolling program this year so that there's no start and end date, and we can get more families in throughout the year instead of having to wait for the 14-week cycle to end and start the next one. So we're very excited about that, so the kids and the families can be better served. We have two facilitators at Locust Grove Primary School that are interested in doing a six-to-11-year-old program, and that would be from the Innovators for Success Grant, so we're excited that we'll have both of them running again. We're also trying to plan a parenting class, actually, two parenting classes this fiscal year with the Innovators for Success. The first one will be for parents for children ages birth through three years old, and they haven't determined yet which age group they want to do in the spring, whether they're gonna do that age group again because it is much needed, or if they'll target older, parents of older children. We're looking just to see what programs are needed within the communities that we don't duplicate our efforts. And on your snapshot, it lists several programs, and some of them can overlap in what they're geared towards, so we're trying to serve our youth the best that we can without duplicating. Our crime control, we ended the year, this year, we closed many cases, most with successful completions. I was very pleased with that. We just signed our two-year memorandum of understanding with court services so that we can continue to receive the referrals from the courts for this grant, and we're gonna be working on revising our CSA vendor contracts this year to incorporate the crime control into them, since we're both in the same office, the same vendors, same programs. It just makes sense to kind of eliminate some of the duplicate paperwork. Our childcare programs continue to be self-sustaining at Gordon Barber in Orange. We're very pleased attendance was up from last summer this year, and we've been working very hard on the possibility of the re-establishment of the Locust Grove Childcare. Our youth council, even though it's summertime, they continue to be busy. Last year, they completed 752 hours of community service that did not include their meetings. Some of their events included an adoption of a family at Thanksgiving, Christmas. They attended Legislative Day in Richmond meeting with Senator, I'm sorry, Delegate Scott. The Orange Safety Fair at Halloween, handing out balloons and passing out information to families and children. They assisted in the annual father-daughter dance and other various events. And then this summer, they helped provide kid activities at the Independence Day Celebration and the Edible Fest. We had a good time. We did a little swim-in at the Edible Fest. We had lots and lots of rain and water, but we had a good time. A lot of our stuff unfortunately was ruined in the rain, but we made the best of it, and the kids had a good time, once it stopped pouring. Right now, we're in the middle of our school supply distribution. We received donations. We had bins throughout the county. We picked those up last Thursday. Unfortunately, supplies weren't as, we didn't receive as many this year, but we were able to help a lot of families so far, and Lake of the Woods Church was our saviors this year. They came yesterday just in the nick of time, and I mean that literally, just, we had parents waiting, and we had hardly anything, and they brought in a van full of supplies and completely restocked our room. It was just amazing. I was crying, and it was wonderful. But just to give you an idea, in the first 90 minutes yesterday, we helped provide school supplies for 105 children. It was very busy, very hectic, and then as of today, when I left, we have provided them to 204. Last year, we did a total of 231, so we're very close to where we were last year, so I'm very pleased with those numbers. Our upcoming activities and events, we are going to be working on, the Youth Commission has decided that human trafficking, it's kind of in the news now, and we want to figure out a way to bring that to our community, not the trafficking part, but the awareness and the prevention, and make it, so it's not scary to parents, but they do learn something, and the kids can learn something to help prevent this. We are going to be working on re-establishing Project Excel in some of the schools. Right now, we're preparing for Breakfast Buddies to start. We're very excited about that. We're preparing for our returning and new youth council members and planning their year. We'll be planning the 20-year celebration for both Gordon Barber and Orange Elementary Childcare Programs, and we will have a couple fundraisers coming up to support Michael's gift and go ahead and start on the after-prom. So we've got a lot going on, and we're preparing for a lot. Any questions?
How many did you say we were helping with the school supplies?
So far today, when I left, it was 204, is what we had documented.
Do you still need school supplies?
We are really good right this second. I did go, we had a gentleman come in and give us a donation today. I did go buy some school, or some notebook paper and some highlighters. Those were two of the things that we had run low on, so I did restock that, but everything else we're looking for, Lake of the Woods, they helped a lot, and I can't say enough about them, so. And then we plan to partner with them next year and figure out how to get it across the entire county, involve more churches, more groups and stuff, so Pastor Savage is on board, and he's ready to go, so.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Okay. Then we move on to public comment. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir, we have one speaker signed up. Victor Ping, 15278, Cosmell Road.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I wish I had some positive things I could say here also. I'm not normally a negative individual. I try to be positive, but you've got to have something positive to talk about, and in all of my research into this program, I haven't found anything positive yet. Maybe that's just me, but I'm welcome, be glad to listen to something that somebody else might be able to present to me. I want to start off with a little different here tonight. I'm gonna say this ribbon here represents Orange County, 100% of Orange County. And if we fold this ribbon like so, then we've got two halves of Orange County, so we've still got 100% of Orange County. And if we bring it up here like this on each side, then this would be 25% of Orange County. And if we go up one more time, then this will be 1/8 of Orange County, or 12 and 1/2%. Orange County right now has just about 15% conservation easements. This is the land use-type conservation easements, and as you can see, the number is rising. We're using 13.3%. So the number is rising, and we're told by reliable sources that in 10 years, it's gonna double, so we can beat the 30%. So we're at 15% now. So we fold that, that's 12 and 1/2%, but we've got to get 15%, so we could stretch it out just a little bit here, and we could have 15% of Orange County is in conservation easements, and this represents, this is that portion of Orange County right here. Now, what are we gonna do with this part of Orange County? This is 15% of Orange County. What are we gonna do with it? Well, what does it contribute to Orange County? You know, a lot of times, that determines what we do with things by its contribution to Orange County. So what do, or does Piedmont Environmental Council and Conservation Easements do for Orange County? Now, I know you might, again, think that I shouldn't be using Piedmont Environmental Council and Conservation Easements, you know, in the same phrase, but, you know... But, you know, if you check their webpage, you'll find that they use Piedmont Environmental Council, VOF, and easements in the first four lines and without any distinction. So, you know, they accept the fact also that, you know, they're pretty much seamless as far as conversation goes. And so I think we can do it here also, if they can do it. So what, what, what does Piedmont Environmental Council and Conservation Easements contribute to Orange County? And, well, we hear a lot from them about history and stuff like that, but, you know, they don't make history. History's been made over the past two hundred and fifty years, so they don't make that. They, how about the tax base? What do they contribute to our tax base? Well, not very much, not very much, and they probably never will. And in fact, you take a seven hundred thousand dollar property, the first one I looked at, and they pay about ninety dollars a year tax. And it's not going to get any better. And some people will say, well, you know, they got the same deal that these farmers land use program has. And that's not true. They don't. You've got to start at the, if you have equal numbers, it will, might work out somewhere close, but it will never be the same. Because first of all, the conservation easements, if you start off up here at the assessed value, then when they're determining their tax credits, if you start off up here, then after you got a assessed value, then they come down to the value after the easement's been applied. So they are accepting the fact that the easement is going to decrease the value of the property. And it's very easy to understand because, you know, they, hey, they can come on the property at any time they want to, all they've got to do is give a reasonable notice. And this is kind of a government program and you know what a reasonable notice is. In fact, they can come on the program, on the farm and they're looking, what they're looking for? Well, they've got written into this easement what's got to go on on the farm and what can't go on on the farm. If it's not up to the standard they think it should be, the owner of the property is going to have to get it to the standard at his expense. And if he doesn't choose to do that, then they can take him to court at his expense and so forth and so on and so forth. So you can see why the value of this property is diminishing instead of increasing because of the and I, I mean, it could go on and on and on about what these things can do. I don't know if any of you have ever gotten one of these easement contracts and read it or not. But this thing goes on and on and on as to what they can do and so forth and so on. And so that's decreases the value. And they the land use tax status, now they, they get the land use tax status, yeah. Now, the assessment office uses the same factor to figure it, but the numbers have got to be equal when they start to come out the same. So if you start off with a farm without easements and a farm with easements, you would think the one with easements is going to start off lower, so obviously the bottom number's going to be smaller when you apply the factors there. And also, they don't have to show any, any, any records to the assessment office up here. And they automatically have land use status. Whereas a farmer has to bring in records and show he is actually farming and so forth. And also, if a farmer, if a farmer goes out of land use, then his last year goes back into taxes at the regular rate and he has to pay up, roll back five years and pay up those taxes. And these guys are not, easements are not involved in any of that at all. They get land use rates and that's the way it stays forever and ever, in perpetuity. So, you know, it's, 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 it's not right to say they get the same deal as farmers do because they got a much more juicy, juicy deal there. Okay, now, how much taxes do they contribute? Again, you can take, what I just looked at, three point four million dollars, three four point four million dollar property and, and improvements. And their annual tax is less than sixteen hundred dollars. They're probably, well, large percentage of the houses here in Orange County, these, these property owners are paying at least sixteen hundred dollars for a maybe, well, sixteen hundred dollars would be probably two hundred thousand dollar house, something like that. Okay, so they're not make, not going to help you much on the, as far as your tax basis concerned. In fact, they're most likely going to be a liability. They're not probably not going to pay enough tax. I would bet you that Walmart, if they've raised so much sand about, will pay more tax every year than all these easements totally in Orange County. I would bet that. Okay, do they promote self-reliance? No, they don't have any concern about self-
Victor, can I ask you to move it along and wrap it up?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, didn't realize I was.
You can save something for next, next one.
No, well, let's, okay, do they pay jobs? No, hope, no. Do they do anything for housing for the family members that's coming along? No. So, do they do anything for tourism? No, that's not their thing, tourism. They do make a lot of noise at these planning meetings and they distort the facts. And they like to stop things and they'd like to delay things and like to discourage things. And, but Piedmont Environmental Council and easements are really a liability to Orange County. They're not, as far as contributing to the overall well-being of Orange County, I, I don't see it. They're not contributing to schools and so forth. At the very least, I think they're a parasite on Orange County. And we're giving up our freedom, our sovereignty, and through easements. And these are perpetuated by Piedmont Environmental Council. Our tax base is being eroded by easements and being perpetuated by Piedmont Environmental Council. We are relinquishing county control of our government due to easements and this is being perpetuated by the Piedmont Environmental Council. Now, how long can this go on without serious consequences in the county? How long can it go on? You know, how long are the people going to tolerate their taxes being tightened up on their properties and these people are getting off pretty juicy there? Mr. Chairman, I would ask, what is the county going to do? Or what's the county's long-term plan to deal with this? Because it's pretty obvious, it's creeping up faster than we realize. And if we keep kicking the can down the road like the federal government does, we're going to have some of the same consequences here. So I would think that it would be wise for the county to kind of, at very least, take a look at this, see what maybe is going to happen in the next ten years, how this is going to impact, impact the county and what can be done about it. At the very least, making people aware of what's going on and what we can anticipate ten years from now, if things continue on the same path on now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Victor. Okay, that was the only question I had. Okay, move on to board comments.
I have one. The next Planning Commission meeting, they're going to discuss Route Three visioning, planning, project and process and the bus trip and a whole variety of things. And I just want to let the board know of that and the, I don't see the EDA members here, but the EDA as well. Oh, I do see the, sorry. It is not going to be a joint three-meet, three-body meeting like we've had it in the past, but this is just to pass along an invitation if there's anyone like to hear that conversation and possibly participate as, as a member of the public. Because unless we announce it as being a joint meeting, we can't together. And I don't know that the particulars have been worked out yet, how it's going to be announced, but.
We may do a media notice that says two or more PE, um, Planning Commission, EDA, I know I've got the PDC on my brain. I'm sorry, the Planning Commission, the EDA and the board, there may be two or more people there and they may discuss county business.
All right. So really it's just an invitation to participate if you're, if you're available.
All right. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to the action items. First is seven A, the establishment of Locust Grove Childcare site, Alicia.
Mr. Chairman, I was here back in June getting guidance from the board about re-establishing the Locust Grove Childcare program. At that time, we had a lot of people calling our office, emailing our office about re-establishing the program and the need for it on the eastern end of the county. Unfortunately, we did not have enough at that time to open for the summer. We had everything in place, just not the children. At this time, we feel that we will be successful if we open during the school year. We have seventeen children enrolled of various attendance statuses and comparing the income versus the expenses, we're short by about two children, three depending upon the status that you look at. And we feel that we'll be able to pick those up once we establish the program and parents are a little bit more comfortable knowing that we are actually there. We've been working very hard and talking to the parents and we've had a lot of support from the schools, the principals mainly, about us coming back. And so at this time, I would just like to ask the board if we could possibly re-establish the program starting the first day of school.
So moved. Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Thank you very much.
Make it work. All right. Seven B, the approval of the design for the joint retreat rec card. Julie.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as everyone knows, we did have a visioning retreat with the Planning Commission and the EDA and the board. And as we normally do from these retreats, we try to create a rec card to commemorate the ideas and capture them so that we can share with the public and other stakeholders what was discussed and what we want to move forward with. Just today, there was a couple of, three or four words that were changed on the version of the rec card that was distributed in the packets last week. But what we would like to do is take this rec card, if y'all are comfortable with the language, and present it to the Planning Commission and the EDA so that they too can become comfortable and give input on this so that it can be ratified or adopted or accepted by all three boards and that we can print this and get it out to stakeholders to try to be more formal in the way that we express what happened at the retreat. The, the document that's before you is not graphically composed at all. It will look more like the rec card with the picture border and all that other kind of stuff. But this is just literally the text and kind of how it'll be laid out.
Are you planning on submitting, submitting it simultaneously to the EDA Planning Commission? Is that your, or you, or you have a path that you're working on?
The, the path is the, the one, it's a chronological path of sorts. The Planning Commission will take it up at the September fifth meeting because it's the next group to meet. And they'll give their approval or input if they have it. And then after that, it will go to the EDA and at that point, unless the board so chooses, it will be ratified of sorts and we'll get it printed. Of course, if, what, what we did was we took the, the language pretty much from the retreat. And as folks have gotten the retreat notes and adopted minutes on the retreat, the, the general ideas have been kind of agreed upon. So we're reasonably comfortable with this text because it's pretty much what came out of the retreat and it's been what's agreed upon in minutes and different other documents. So we know that we need all three bo- boards to kind of adopt this. And if the board is comfortable, the board supervisors that is, they can adopt it tonight. And then if dramatic changes happen, it can come back before you. But otherwise, once the EDA takes it up on their meeting that they're going to call in September, then it would be done and ready to be printed. We're, we're trying not to delay the distribution of it too much because there's a, a gap between July and September.
What, what do we have on the website, the, this particular portion of the website?
Do you want me to go to that proportion of the website?
Why, ju- uh, yeah, you can do that. I just wanted to see what is, what all we have there.
Let's see. Smart. Okay, thank you. We have the draft rec card on the website, but if you go, this is just the opening, let's see, here's the opening of the, the website, the homepage. If you go to the bottom, there's Route Three Strategic Visioning Initiative. And then if you go through that, we talk about the initiative, we talk about the community meeting on June twenty-seventh, the retreat, remind folks of public comment opportunities. We link on here the presentation by Chris Lloyd, the gallery walk slideshow, the press release that we did on the thirty-first of July. And next will be the draft of this that will then go to the Planning Commission and the EDA. So under additional links and resources, you'll see the draft rec card.
Do we have, do you plan on any more detail with regard to the retreat in terms of Tyler's report or any of that?
Sure, we can connect that under Joint Retreat. We can, um,
Okay.
put her final comments. Those can be two additions that can be made pretty quickly. Click of a button, basically. Also, the May ninth presentation is here and the June twenty-seventh presentation is listed on this.
Okay. Okay, I'm to approve.
And a second, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries four zero, one absent. All right, next, fee donation requests from Rapid Hand Better Housing Corporation.
We received a request from the Rapid Hand Better Housing Corporation to do a fee donation. They are I'm going to make this bigger so everybody can see it. They are working on a housing project on Lakeview Lane. The building department has estimated the fees that would be needed, which is about four hundred dollars. As you know, we have a line item in the budget that is allocated for expenditures such as this. And if the board so chooses, there's forty-six hundred dollars remaining in the funds. And this would take four hundred, give or take, from that in the FY fourteen budget.
So moved. What was the question first? What was the original budget, forty-six or?
Five thousand.
Five, okay.
We've done the Gordonsville Street Festival and the Somerset Steaming Gats so far.
All right, I have a motion.
I'll second.
And second, any further discussion? And second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, four zero one absent. Uh last then for the action items, resolution to accept the deed of dedication right away from Walmart.
Mister Chairman, this is an item that's actually been pending longer than I've been here.
We know.
Which is over a year now. Um this is a uh, we finally have worked out the language with Walmart, with the easement and with the, with the state. Attorney General's Office got involved and they wanted some changes and they convinced VDOT to ask for some changes. And so this is the final iteration that everyone has signed off on. VDOT has signed off on it, Attorney General's Office has signed off on it. And so all we need is the board to sign off on it.
I'll have to admit, when I asked Tom Klein about this, whether we could get this, I had absolutely no expectations we'd be getting this far.
Well, I can tell you one thing, if you make the motion, I want to make the second because we earned it.
Okay, I will make the motion.
I make the second. Is there any further discussion? In that case, all in, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 thank you. All right, uh move then to appointments to boards, commissions and committees. Uh eight A, social services board appointment, Julie.
Yes, Mister Chairman, members of the board, we um realized a couple meetings ago, we reappointed Pat Neighbors to an incorrect term. We um had her expiration date on this board incorrect. And so what we're asking you to do is to kind of reverse what you did before
Unapproved.
and make our records match what um they should be. So we would like to update committee files to reflect her um expiration date from the board as June thirtieth, twenty fifteen. And we'll send her a corrected letter. It's basically a housekeeping item.
Twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen?
It, it will expire on twenty fifteen. A couple board meetings ago, we, we um started her, her term earlier or later than it was supposed to be and we extended it to twenty seventeen, but that's not correct.
Okay.
She's basically not due reappointment at this time.
I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that I got the numbers straight here.
Sure, she.
You said two twenty sixteen, I'm looking at, I don't see a twenty sixteen on here.
We. I'm sorry, I meant to say twenty thirteen and twenty fifteen. Her, basically we reappointed her before she needed to be reappointed and so now we need to reverse that.
Okay.
Okay. We have faith in her.
Yes, we are so excited, we're willing to reappoint her before she's even needing to do it.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero one absent. Uh Skyline Cap appointment, Julie.
What's that? Oh, Skyline Cap, yeah.
Yep.
I move that we appoint Mister Bowman to the Skyline Cap Board.
I have a motion, a second.
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero, one absent. Discussion items, request regarding maintenance of Rolling Hills Drive, Julie. Unless, excuse me, unless we have any other appointments. Okay.
We um, the board received a packet and I might ask our planning director to come up if y'all have additional questions because he's actually gone to the, the site and questioned, but I don't know what kinda questions you'll have. But um we received a couple of emails uh about Rolling Hills Drive and thankfully uh Mister Zodi went and took some pictures and toured the area and the citizens are asking for our help. Um the one specifically lives at forty four eighty five Rolling Hills Drive. They would like us to consider um having these streets brought into the state system. And then I'll hand it over to Mister Zodi.
Where, where exactly is it?
It's off of, I believe the road is Old Musket Field Road, in that area, north, north part of the county. Zor in that area. But when I toured it, um I notice there's about fourteen to fifteen mailboxes lined in the road. And you drive down the road and I took a few pictures, but these were the most troubling to me is just the, they're deep ruts, cause some of these ruts on the road on the downstair are, you know, close to a foot deep and everything. And I, I took these photos because I kinda wanted to highlight the fact that this is, it's typical of um these subdivisions and I have a larger issue is that, you know, we probably need to reconsider doing road maintenance agreements with Platts. We don't currently with subdivisions. But my feeling is that until we get something, we shouldn't be taking in a lot of roads, quite honestly. We don't have the funding for that or um to get them up to standards cause I think they, we just don't have that capability, in my opinion. Cause if we take in one, there's a lot of um privately maintained roads in the county and I just don't think it's in the county's best interest for them to do that.
There's two steps that would need to be taken. One is um we would have to somehow acquire or be gifted um a fifty foot easement right away um for the entire road, right away. And then it would have to be brought up to state sta- standards and then it could be considered to go into the state system.
What, what is the ownership now? Is it, is, is it allocated among the seventeen or so properties or how is it done?
I believe so, I believe it's just uh they might have created an access easement going down the entire stretch of the development because you have, a lot of places you have houses on one side, then it kinda switches and then it ends in a large, sort of a cul-de-sac, a country cul-de-sac, um just basically dirt and some grass, yes sir.
Stop. Stop.
Yeah, it's, it's a unique cul-de-sac, I'll say the least. But typically with subdivisions, they just, there's an easement that runs through there and this must have been uh created, the subdivision prior to our two thousand and eight ordinance or I'm not even sure what the standard was prior to two thousand and eight. Right now, if you have more than two homes on a private drive, you have to build it up to state standards. And the state unfortunately doesn't have standards for small minor subdivisions.
Which drives up the cost of the, of a home by having those standards, but at the same time, we don't end up with this.
Yeah, we have very few, quite honestly, uh I'm not aware of a lot of many subdivisions that are not major subdivisions where they're built to um state standards. I mean, that's a very expensive endeavor. And it's typically geared toward uh large subdivisions where you might have, where you, well, we require fifty foot right away, but you also, an easement rather. And, but you have to do the paving, the subsurface, and then the paving and, you know, it's expensive. And then there's been a few other larger subdivisions where they're still trying to get their uh roads taken in the state system. I think there's one to the northwest of Lake of the Woods Rapid Hand Hills and then there's also another on the south of twenty in Mister Wilson's district and it's a fairly large subdivision.
Have you had any conversations with these people at all?
Yes, sir.
So I, I take it that they're not aware of the, these processes and the steps that need to be taken?
Well, I know that um we can look at the email from Mister and Mrs. Chandler and they, they talk about having some conversations with their neighbors. Um they talk about having their neighbors help with the funds to fix the, the road with no success. And she does offer, or they offer to um speak to the board as well. Um the, the two neighbors that we've heard from, Miss Tina Joyt and the Chancellors, have mentioned that their neighbors have no interest in contributing to um fix the problem. But they all think something needs to be done.
You, you move on those kinda roads, you, you, it is what it is. For them to bring it up to, to specs to bring it in?
They can't afford that.
It's, it's a long, it's a long segment, it's a fairly long stay, segment. I'd say between a quarter of a mile long um to maybe a third of a mile long. It's, it's, it's not, it, it would not be an inexpensive undertaking for the property owners.
I mean, they can't even get the, up people together to fix the, the existing problems.
Sure.
We can send a, a letter to these two um residents that reached out to us saying, here are the steps to get it.
I, I think, you know.
We understand that, that there's no interest in funding it, the, the board at this time has no funding, but we appreciate knowing the status of this road.
Uh yeah, I think, I think we need to go back to them, just explain, here's the process. Let them know this is, this is what has to be done and that the county doesn't have funds to bring it up to speed. And uh, you know, just let them know that that's where they stand.
Okay.
We can put it on the um discussion list when we talk about the six-year plan that we adopt in May. We can, we can talk about it, um I know there's some other things with the town of Gordonsville that may, may or may not be introductions to that plan, but don't um currently exist on those, but.
Would, would that be something they go under uh the rural pro- rural roads program?
Yeah.
There still would be cost and, and I don't know if the rural addition program would cover.
Fully cover that?
Well, you also just, and I don't wanna belabor this issue, but you also have to consider that the, the roads have to meet ASHTO standards um the, and s- a lot of times the slope um of the road, you can't, cannot exceed a certain um amount, nine, ten percent or something like this. And that some, some, two segments of this road, uh my opinion, come awfully close to um exceeding that standard. And so, you know, it's unfortunate.
We're talking earth movement here.
Yes, sir. Well, and at the bottom of the sw- of the um hill where I took the pictures, um it's clear that there's some water movement through there, else there wouldn't be the rutting in the road.
There has to be a hill or there wouldn't be.
Yes, sir. Well, then I think it's, there's a conveyance, there's just a natural stream conveyance across there.
No, I, I just think it's.
Well, I don't see any ditches.
Yeah, there's.
I think it's only like, it's more like the, the road goes in like this and that is your creek bed, so.
And Graham, I think we should give them the information that we have in terms of what, what need to take place.
And the context of the state.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we can work on that.
We, we can talk about it when we, when we get the next six-year plan, but I don't.
Okay.
Hey Greg, I had another uh county resident ask me about this exact same thing. I actually wrote them a letter explaining all the requirements. So if you email me, I'll send you what I've already drafted so you don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, thank you Greg. Uh. Okay, we.
He, he tried to escape.
Yep. Come back up, design standards.
I wasn't expecting to get up on that one, so here I am again.
Um staff put together uh basically just a copy of the draft Palitan County um design standards. And we reviewed them, they're very robust. Um they cover everything that in my opinion we should be covering uh in terms of development standards for the county, uh from signs to buffers. Um and the interesting part about the buffers, a lot of, some localities will have uh varying buffers depending on the adjacent use or the adjacent zoning. And I think along Route Three corridor and in other areas of the county, I think it'd be beneficial for us to consider that after hearing a lot of public hearings about um that they'll be able to see this use and depending if you're doing a commercial, you're next to residential, you have to do a twenty foot buffer or something like that. That way we don't have to do what, what, what occurred with Signature Station. We'll have these development standards in place and to me, it reduces the public hearing time, the time it takes for the applicant to get through the process. Uh my opinion, once we have these standards in place, Palitan I think is an e- excellent example of development standards for a rural community.
Those have not actually been adopted yet.
Right, and the draft for the draft.
Thirty weeks from now they're supposed to be. And tho- those standards are actually reviewed by Sharon Pandak as well.
What would the next step be logically, send these to the uh planning commission to uh?
Yes, sir.
To start working them?
Yes, sir.
Do they already have them?
I'm going to deliver them, I put my memo to them um for this upcoming meeting. I'm delivering those and several other ordinance, uh the James City County ordinance as well as uh Chairman Brooks requested the city center and the Oyster Point uh district regulations as well. And I'll circulate that to you all as well as to Mister Crozier and the EDA.
Are you anticipating these to be uh county-wide at this point or specific to Route Three or?
My, my preference, professionally my preference is uh county, I'd like to see them county-wide, but we will accommodate you, the board, however you all like.
I think we should just make them apply to the Route Three corridor and somewhere along the line, we gotta define where that limits are.
Yeah, I, I, I think the, the planning commission needs to either hear from us on that or, or debate that themselves and make a recommendation, whichever, I, I just.
I mean, I, I think that uh, yeah, I mean, I, I, I. Planning commission ought to make some recommendations on it.
Right.
But I, but I don't think this should apply to the whole county.
Yeah, pro- probably focusing initially on Route Three is, is the right first step at least.
I mean, these, these are, these are different than Orange County. Uh I like them, but I think that uh this is something that, you know, if we put it into this new area uh and along the corridor, which is what we're trying to, to manage in this, in this economic engine initiative. I think we ought to put it there and uh and at some point, maybe uh other county, rest of the county would, would like to incorporate it or not.
Or partially.
Partially, yeah.
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
I think we ought to send it to the uh planning commission.
Okay, um did we need any formal or just?
No, doesn't have to be formal.
Okay.
Uh I would also think that uh we ought to stick it on the website. I mean, we got discs and it's a pretty big document.
Yes, sir.
Uh if there's room to put it on the website so that people can start looking at it and seeing what it is we're trying to accomplish down there.
Okay, let me note that.
So we'll provide it to the planning commission with guidance, we'll provide it to the EDA just with some background as to what we're doing.
For their inputs, I would like their inputs on it.
Sure. With the initial focus on Route Three.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Let's see if we can find another one with your name on it. All right, uh next is the safer grant for firing EMS staffing, John Harkness.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm here tonight to request permission to apply for a safer grant again this year. The safer grant is staffing for adequate fire protection. We're asking to apply for three positions. The total cost of the grant would be four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And what that does is it covers the cost of three employees for a period of two years. That would be their salary and their benefits. For a lot of the reasons, as I've been in front of the board before, the reason we're applying for this grant is that staffing factor that we've talked about, to be able to train and leave, injuries, et cetera. The assistance that we're providing to fire companies, which continues to grow. I mean, we had a call today, an accident with supposedly someone trapped and one of the fire companies was unable to respond. That's happened several times over the, the last um couple months.
Was that on Route twenty this morning?
Yes, it was. And luckily that turned out to be a, a minor incident, but the point being is we're challenged on the volunteer fireside. Certain companies definitely have some uh challenges as far as being able to respond, especially during the, the daylight hours. Is, we are providing an assistance to volunteer fire companies as, as I've stated before in front of the board. When we take one of our medic units and put them on a fire truck, we've lost twenty-five percent of our EMS resources for the county. And when you take one or two medic units, you can see how that quickly um does away with our, our resources. You, one of the models that we were using when I took over that we've since changed is, you know, we were providing a driver to certain fire companies. Um the problem with that is, the companies that have the challenges as far as staffing goes, they were responding to literally less than a, a call a week when you averaged it out. It, it's just not a cost-effective way to do business. What I would like to see is to increase that staffing where we can actually staff an additional medic unit that actually helps provide fire and EMS coverage for the, for the county of Orange. And I'm gonna use the example of the, the medic unit that's um staffed in the Barbersville area. They run little over eight hundred calls a year. Of those eight hundred calls, at least half, four hundred, gee pushing five hundred are actually out of their first due response area. They're, they're covering calls in the town of Orange or, or other parts of the county. Same thing happens at the eastern end of the county when Lake of the Woods is out. You know, you're drawing resources from other areas of the county, which, which impacts our services. One of the things we need to look at when it comes to life safety is there's a there's a type of a heart attack we call a STEMI. It's S.T. elevation, Marty, Mayo, Carter.
And Far.
Thank you, Mr. Frame. Bottom line, it's a it's a heart attack that you don't wanna have. If you have this, chances are you you're gonna die, or you're gonna be seriously disabled for life. We average one of those a week. Um, last week, or last board meeting when I was in front of you requesting the change from the forty-eight to fifty-three hour employees, you know, we actually had over half our EMS resources out on calls, uh, assisting the fire companies, and we actually had somebody that had a STEMI. And luckily, we were able to get to that person in a in a fairly quick manner and got him to the cath lab, because the only thing that's gonna save these people is identifying it in the field. We call it a STEMI alert, where we actually notify the hospital, so the hospital knows where and route with this type of a patient, and they get him into the cath lab, and they're able to open him up, you know, with the balloon. Point being is that having that unit, or additional people, will allow us to have an additional unit on the street. N- not one hundred percent of the time, but the majority of the time, which is gonna, again, provide better EMS coverage for the citizens, not to mention be able to provide coverage for the volunteer fire companies.
Do we?
Go ahead.
Do we have any grants already out?
Now, we, this is the, this is the same grant when I was hired last year, we applied for the same time last year. We applied for two safer grants. One was for, um, the staffing, the second was for volunteer recruitment and retention. Uh, we didn't receive either of those grants, and in fact, the reason we didn't receive the volunteer recruitment and retention grant is because the state received that grant through the state fire chiefs, which were involved in that volunteer recruitment and retention study. So again, that, although we weren't directly successful, we were still successful on that volunteer recruitment and retention side, which I'll touch on here in a minute. But just the same as last year, we nee- we need to be planning for the future, the changing demographics of of volunteerism in general. Um, you know, we've had some limited success. We did pick up, uh, a few applications during the month of July, which was the kickoff month for the volunteer recruitment and retention study. There are some positive signs. We have, um, I think it's twenty-some people, not all of them are from the county, in the firefighter one class, um, that starts in the month of September. Orange Rescue Squad is doing a EMT class, which we're assisting with, that will start, um, in the month of September. In fact, they're doing CPR tonight. That's why Chief Joyce left, but, um,
How many do you have registered?
I think it's gonna be right around fourteen. Um, not, again, not all of them are from the county, but again, it takes time to get those people up to speed, trained. The changing demographics, you know, we talked about Lake of the Woods Rescue Squad, which is, has a very strong organization, but when you look at the demographics, um, it's an, um, immature, I think is the word we used last year. But bottom line is, in a few years.
He's staring at you, not me.
It was actually.
I gotta be the oldest, oldest, uh, rescue squad, uh.
I'm u- I'm I'm actually using your word from last year, you matured. But the bottom line is, people of retirement age have a li- limited life, um, expectancy in this business, and, you know, once you reach a certain age, it's it's a very physical job that, um, we need to start planning. And in a couple years, we're gonna see a a change there. Um, the Route Three anticipated growth, you know, we've we've been talking about that. We've had the Walmart, we have medical facility, a dialysis center that's opening on Route Three. That's, um, that they generate EMS calls. So I just feel we have this opportunity right now to apply for this grant. And it's, um, you know, there's no guarantees, as we saw last year. But what this does do is allow us to project, you know, six months to a year, to almost a year and a half out in the future, um, to fill the need for additional fire and EMS people.
The one thing to know is if we get it, two years later, we're gonna have to add to the budget.
Then we get it. At quarter million a a year, so.
Either that, or as people, um, leave through
Well, yeah, yeah, but the point is, if you've gotten used to a certain staffing level, trying to say, yeah, we're gonna let these two guys go without replacing them, uh, uh, you know.
normal turnover, you don't replace them, that you've become a type. That's right.
Yeah.
There's no requirement to replace them, but you you almost do.
But I I understand, uh, the demand. If we get these guys, can I, I made a uh, I think we probably ought to go ahead and let them start get that grant. I recognize that, uh, that in a couple of years, uh, we're probably gonna have to be able to do that.
Yeah.
'Cause again, you're 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 looking a couple years in advance, and but before the county saw an impact, you're probably talking three, three and a half years.
When are these grants awarded? What, I'm trying to get an idea of the cycle that you're talking about.
Um, this cycle, we'll we'll have this in, we'll apply, um, the end of this week is the closing of this grant. They, as of last week, still, um, were award, making awards from last year's grant.
So we'd find out about a year from now that we got it, and then it'd be two years after that that we'd start budgeting.
Well, it'd It'd probably be this, this, somewhere in the late winter to early spring, we'd find, well, that's when they start actually awarding, and then it could be anytime.
Okay. Two other things. Uh, last week, uh, Roger and Don, uh, I had a call, and, uh, I had to go to the hospital. And, uh, while I was en route, second call, and Don and Roger picked up our second ambulance and covered it so that we didn't have to, and at that time, the, uh, the twenty-one's ambulance, I understand, had problems. And so, uh, didn't have to wait for somebody to come from Orange. I didn't even know if Orange was available, it might've had to come from Barbersville. But, uh, thank, uh, Donnie and Roger. Uh, also, I'd like to thank you for your graciousness in, uh, uh, making sure those words was a ru- that got recognition from the other two, and you backed that.
Well, that, if, again, they're, uh, it was their work, and I I think I've made that clear a couple times, but thank you.
Sure.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
So do you wanna have a motion, or do you want us to just, um,
Do we need a motion?
We have your thumbs, but do you wanna do something formal?
I'll make a motion, we apply for the grant.
Yeah, I'll second. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Uh, information items. Any question on those, or the CSA report? Okay.
Under budget, wow.
Uh, yeah.
Under budget, woo.
All right.
Still.
Committee reports. All right, calendar.
Mr. Chairman, one late-breaking, um, item that has been discussed regarding calendar, um, we've been working on this Route Three visioning, um, initiative, and we've talked about the natural breakdown of work lately has tended to be towards visioning and continuing to develop a plan and and our our vision for the area, but also a second major aspect is infrastructure, specifically water impoundment and, um, the the infrastructure that's that's necessary to support whatever visioning we come up with. We've talked about how the the visioning and all of that work will take, um, years and decades to both create and implement, and we've also said that if there was to be some major water work done on the area, it might take anywhere from ten to fifteen years to permit. Um, one of the questions that came about from the the tour on the bus was, you know, what what does that even entail? What does it mean besides it being a a big hole with water and it needing a permit? You know, could we elaborate on that? And, um, doesn't seem that there's any specific, um, insight from any of the the boards, the planning commission, the board supervisors, or the EDA. And there was a request for us to have kind of a primer on this, um, water permitting activities by one of our, uh, engineers that are on the tainer. We've suggested, um, a meeting of, kinda like what we did with Chris Lloyd, so it's not particularly a joint meeting, but it's a meeting where all three of those boards will be invited to sit and and learn from a expert on the the twenty-fifth of September at six P M. Um, the EDA may also have a meeting before or after to do some of this other work, the v- the rack card and other such things. But, um, the the group of us would like to request that the board of supervisors consider initiating a, um, meeting on the twenty-fifth where Fred Priville of Draper Aiden, um, gives some insight and some examples of some other water activity that's happened in other communities for us to look at like we looked at Newtown and Ensbroke and West Creek and all of that, and for it to start on the si- at six o'clock.
Okay. Where where is September? Pull up September.
September twenty-fifth, it's a Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday, all right.
That's a scheduled EDA meeting?
No, it's not.
Day? Or not?
Um, it's not. It's not a schedule, the EDA is every other month, so they, um, were scheduled to have a joint meeting with the board of supervisors on the tenth, since we have the joint meeting of all three boards in October. That EDA meeting, September tenth, was canceled. Um, so they needed to reschedule a special meeting of sorts to do some business, and this could be a a good opportunity to also learn this. We have not checked with the planning commission nor the EDA members to see if we have a majority of folks. Um, if we, kinda like the retreat, if we start to have lots and lots of people that just can't be there, then we'll change it. But so far, um, the consultant can do it on nine twenty-five at six, and we hope that we can get a a good attendance.
Okay. If I'm in with me, y'all. Okay.
In anticipation of that, we'll also gather up some information and have as many, um, meetings to be more educated as possible.
All right. Well, given that we're done with that, I would look for one last motion, to a motion to adjourn.